Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Please rise for the plenarium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in a visible with liberty and justice for all.
I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, we get a prize. I know who's here. Let's do roll calls.
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hages.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Tealander.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here.
Now.
I'll make that a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hages.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Okay, citizen comment or not on the agenda? Moving on, old business might be five digits to go.
Real quickly, since our last meeting, we, myself, city attorney, Dick Want, and Steve Dockers, we have been in communication with Lowell A.D. regarding the directed action of council back in December. I can inform you that they have submitted a proposal for us to consider to resolve the issue. We are still working out the information in that proposal. We should have something here, I think, pretty soon that we can at least, us three and Lee can meet on, and then I believe we probably will have something shortly thereafter that with, for the Lowell A.D. and power of city council in a joint meeting of that nature. So, we are moving forward towards some sort, towards a solution on it. But at this point, it's, I really can't speak to much of the proposal at this point because it's still, there's still a lot of things that have to be worked on.
Okay. Any discussion? New business, a mayor's presentation.
I have requested for, I had met recently with Mike Overly, who's here this evening, who's our representative in the Michigan Municipal Employee Retirement System. I've asked him to come make a presentation to the council regarding our current financial position in the retirement system. We are currently about 66 percent funded into the system, and we have approximately a $3.4 million unfunded liability. Now, if you look at other cities in the state, we're probably pretty good comparison to a number of cities. However, this is something that in the future we are going to have to address and work towards resolution on. And Mike is, I have asked Mike to come here tonight to start to, to share with you the information and to discuss possible options to consider in the future. So, Mike, if you, if you would.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mike. Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity. Like I said, keep this sort of short, so two hours and 30 minutes. As I said, if you look at that, you're good. So, no, I'm kidding, 20 minutes. So, Mike passed on a copy of this already. Again, I'm Mike Overly. I've been with MERS for about 12 years now, so just wanted to give you the high level of your plan and provide you with some options and let me know that we're here for you. So, please ask me if you have any questions as we go through this. I do have this page numbered here, so I believe everyone hopefully is familiar with MERS, but if you're not, MERS is, as Mike said, the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan. We are based in Lansing, so not too far down the road. We have been in existence since 1946, originally a part of the state of Michigan, and we became an independent, not-for-profit retirement services entity back in 1996. Though we've been separated from the state for over 21 years, but we are a public entity just like the city. We are governed by an independent elected board of nine individuals, which includes peers. So, county administrator happens to be our chairman of our board right now. We try to bring a number of different perspectives to the table at our board, so when we're considering any possible action that affects municipalities, we're vetting it through a number of different perspectives. As you'll notice on the bottom of page two, that's sort of what I like to refer to as the wheel, if you will, of products and programs that MERS offers. Once upon a time when MERS was initially created, we were solely a defined benefit pension administrator. That's the defined benefit that you see there in the top right sort of quadrant there. Over time, as the needs of Michigan municipalities have evolved and changed in the realm of retirement programs and related programs, MERS has evolved to really meet those needs as well. So, the resulting focus on the wheel, if you will, represents new products and new programs that have come online. So, I'll leave the rest of that for another day if you have interest. So, moving right into the defined benefit plan, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. On page three, I wanted to give you a feel, there's two perspectives or multiple perspectives, of course, on any topic that you're talking about. So, I wanted to give you, council, a feel for how does this benefit work? So, this is looking at it from the participants' standpoint, employee of the city of Lowell specifically. So, this is what we sometimes refer to as the traditional pension or a lifetime pension benefit. And from an individual participant's standpoint, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what does that benefit mean for me? And that benefit is calculated based on what we call a three-part formula that you'll see there at the top of the boxes, if you will. So, there's three components, what we call final average compensation. That piece is just your average wages over a certain period of time. It's the number that we're going to base your pension on. That's part one. Part two is service credit. That's literally the years and months that an individual works for providing service to the citizens of the city of Lowell. Individuals earn service credit if they work at least 100 hours in a given month, and then that should, you command, over time, you know, those numbers get longer. And then the third component piece is what we call a benefit multiplier. And for the city specifically, there's a 2.5 percent benefit multiplier that's offered. And I do need to append my comments and say, under the city's umbrella, the light and power is under the city's umbrella as well. And so, based on the discussions with, with Mike, we wanted to focus just on the city, so I didn't want to bring the light and power into it, but I'm glad to share that with you at another time, just two different, two different perspectives. So, just wanted to mention that upfront. Vesting is achieved, an individual locks in this lifetime benefit after 10 years of service. The individual can retire at age 60. That's typically the earliest they can go. There is an early retirement option, so it allows somebody to retire earlier than age 60 if he or she has worked 55 years and has 25 years of service. They do have to meet both of those requirements in order to draw their lifetime pension benefit. And then last but not least, both the city and employees contribute to this plan. The current employee contribution rate is set at 6 percent. So, again, the key thing with this plan, it's a, it's a lifetime benefit provided to employees. So, from the individual's standpoint, you know, he or she can sort of plug in their numbers, and they can get a pretty good feel for, you know, what does this benefit look like to me today? What does this benefit look like to me potentially in the future when I go to retire? So, I use some really simple math, which is my best type of math on page four. I just wanted to give you a feel for what could this benefit potentially look like if you had an individual that meets these requirements? So, say somebody worked for 25 years, they have an even average salary over a three-year timeframe of $50,000. Literally multiply, the 2.5 percent multiplier, multiply those together, we come out with the $31,000 plus benefit amount. That's what we call a straight life amount or the maximum that an individual could reach on, earn on an annual basis, divide by 12 to come up with the monthly amount. Now, there is an option for an individual to bill when they retire, that they can say, I'd like to take less in order to have a benefit for my spouse. So, when an individual goes to apply for retirement, they are provided a unique calculation by MERS, giving them exactly what all of their options are. But in this scenario, the benefit to the individual would always be no more than $2,604. So, many more details that go into there, but to give you a feel what that looks like. Yes, sir?
Mike, you pointed out the employee funds 6 percent of this, the other 94 percent is funded by the city.
Yeah, the balance of the cost. Yep, and I've got some of that detail coming up for it, but yes.
So.
What's that? Believe we're 5 percent. Is it 5 now? Yeah, we're 5. Okay, can you change it now? I'm sorry. Thank you. So, this data that I have is as of the most recent actuarial report, official report, which is as of the close of 2015. Within the next four months, by the end of June, I will have the 2016 report, which will have all the new updates to basically everything on the top here. So, thank you. I appreciate that. So, moving over to page five. You know, with any type of retirement plan, obviously, you know, the key focus is to get money into the plan in order to get money out, you know, from a long-term standpoint. So, we have employee contributions, we have city contributions, all of that money is then pooled up here at the city and then sent over to MERS. It's invested by our investment managers over at MERS. Interestingly, the larger the MERS system becomes, the more proficient we can become at investing. So, there's about 820 municipalities of all shapes and sizes just in the state of Michigan that participate in MERS system, and we have about $10 billion in total assets, again, from communities as small as one person up to hundreds and hundreds of employees. So, that money does get invested on a long-term basis, so it's a long-term investment horizon, because an employment career is also a long-term investment horizon. So, I wanted to give you a feel for, at the bottom of page five, on table five, what do the numbers look like for the last 10 years? So, what you're looking at here is sort of money in, money out. So, you see the years back to 2005 on the left. You can see what the city as a whole, this is light and power and city, this is the only time I've got to blend in numbers. The combined employer contributions is in that second column from the left. The city and/or light and power has contributed additional, that shows up in the additional column. You can see what the employee contributions were in the next column over. You can see what investment income has added to the fund on an annual basis for the last 10 years. And then under benefit payments, that's the amount going out to pay current retirees and/or their beneficiaries depending on what their circumstances are. So, the key pieces are really money in from the city, money from employees, and the light and power. The investment income and then balancing that equation with the, with the money on the outward bound side. So, again, just wanted to give you a feel for the power of investments, how much that, that plays to providing that, that lifetime benefit for the individual. Yes, sir?
Can you clarify for me? These numbers don't really jive with the 5 and 95 percent. It more looks like the employees contributing 33 percent or 40 percent to the city's numbers. It's, the ratio isn't really correct, then.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get into that in just a second, I promise. Yeah, but no, that's a, that's a, that's a great question. It sort of gets into what the actuaries do. So, and it's coming up very soon, I promise.
Okay.
So, on page six, the goal with these plans, you know, promising a lifetime benefit, and I like this, the scale and visual. You know, when you think on one side, you've got the promise, and that's shown under the projected benefits that we pay. That's the liability, if you will, to the city. It's a promise to pay this lifetime benefit for a city employee who has worked at least 10 years at minimum to lock in this benefit. So, that's on one side of the equation. On the other side, you have the contributions from the city, the contributions from the employee, and then those investment earnings on a long-term basis that are used to pay that liability. So, if you, if you follow the public pension, or really just the pension dialogue on a national basis or a local basis, a lot of folks will talk about, what is my funded level, or how well-funded am I? What's my funding position? They all sort of mean the same thing. It's what's the ratio of the assets to the liabilities? What has been earned versus how much money is there on hand at any given time in order to pay that promised benefit? So, the goal with all these plans is that at a certain point in time in the future, we have to fully fund the plan. The plan, the scales have to be in balance, the plan has to be 100 percent funded. So, thus the level playing field. As Michael had mentioned in the beginning, I wanted to focus in just on the city here. So, at the table that you see at the bottom of page six, this is the 10-year history of funding position going back to 2005. So, literally, that's, that's the scales. As he, as Mike mentioned, about 65 percent there as of the end of 2015. I'll have new numbers here again in a few months. Another way of looking at a funded position is as of this moment in time, December 31st, 2015, for every dollar that's promised, there's 65 cents on hand in the fund to pay that. Now, now some folks may say, wow, you know, yikes, that, that's scary. But we do have some folks who are in the plan retired, and they're drawing a benefit out, but we also have active employees who are many, many years away from being retired. So, it's a long term, so there's not a need to be fully funded today, but there is on a long-term basis a requirement to get that plan to a fully funded position. So, the question that you probably have is, okay, okay, well, how do, how do we do that? You know, we're promising a lifetime benefit, but how do we know how much money to set aside to provide this lifetime benefit? So, moving over to page seven, that's where we, we bring in our actuaries. And our actuaries, their sole focus is to say, okay, the city of Lowell offers this retirement plan. There's employees that have this here. These are their benefit plan provisions, the multiplier, the vesting, the thing that makes your plan, your plan. And they're trying to say, okay, with these people, with this plan, how much money do we need to have in this plan long-term? So that everybody that becomes vested at the city of Lowell walks out that door, and they know that their benefit is, is fully paid for, and so that the city council can fully fulfill the promise that it's made to the employees who need that threshold. So, so what do the, what do the actuaries do? I'm not an actuary in any way, shape, or form. I, I talk to them all the time, have a lot of respect for the work that they do, and that being said, I'm glad I'm not one. So, this is my best way to try and explain what they're looking at. They're looking at the money that's in your plan right now. They're looking at who the people are that are covered by the plan, and they're looking at what are the provisions that make your plan unique. Then on top of all of that, they're going to have to make some assumptions about that group of people. And more specifically, they're going to have to make assumptions about all of the individuals that are in the MERS system. So, thousands and thousands of participants across the state. What are those assumptions? Well, things like, how long do we expect people to live? So, we're promising a lifetime benefit, and we don't want to promise, say, that everybody's going to live to 100, because that's, that's not accurate. But we also don't want to promise till age 60, because that, that's probably not accurate on that side here. We make assumptions about what do we expect earnings to increase by each year. You know, their pay raises roughly going to be, you know, a half percent, 1 percent, 2 percent. So, we make assumptions about that. We make assumptions about our investment rate of return. So, when money is sent over to Lansing, what do we expect that money to grow at on an annual basis? So, inflation, things like that. So, there's, there's about 25 different assumptions that we make. Those are, some of the ones that I mentioned are some of the key ones. So, again, high level, we've got a group of employees here at the city that have a specific defined benefit plan with certain provisions, and we apply a whole series of assumptions to those folks. And what we're basically saying is, for these people with this plan, if these things come true, these assumptions come true, or are highly, highly accurate, then we will have set aside enough money for those folks on a long-term basis so that the plan, the plan becomes fully funded over a, over a certain time frame. So, that's really what the actuaries are trying to do. And again, hopefully, no one in the room is an actuary. The actuaries are never right. I mean, and I don't, I don't think they're wrong, but they're, but they're estimates based on what they know about the past and what they expect to happen in the future. But if they are exactly right, they are, they're lucky that day. So, I mean, it's, it's based on a lot of confidence, but, but they don't know, you know, until we invent that, because of all, this will continue to be a science of math. So, that's, that's what we're trying to do. So, you might have seen those, those numbers that we just saw on the previous page on page six, and you saw that the funding level was at 74 percent, and now it's at 65 percent. So, okay, well, what, what happened there? That was a more substantial decrease. So, one of the reasons for the more substantial decrease between 2014 and 2015 was that MERS updates their assumptions every so often through a process that we call an experience study. So, again, we've got all these assumptions that we make. We have to make sure that the assumptions that we're using are based in reality. So, again, we could go pie in the sky, really high, really low, really skewed the numbers beyond the fact that that's not ethical. We've got to base our numbers based upon the most relevant, accurate data so that the contribution requirements that we're giving to every member in MERS is, is an accurate reflection of where we think we are going and based on reality. So, so this experience study says, hey, let's take a look at all the 25 different assumptions that we have, and let's look at the data for the last five years and compare it to every assumption. And if the data says, you know, the assumption's here, but the data is way up here, then maybe we'd have to look a little closer and say, we have to make a change to that assumption. We want to adjust the assumption. So, we're always doing this every five years to make sure things are readjusted, sort of like realigning the ship, if you will, to keep on a steady course. So, we completed an experience study that wrapped up at the end of 2014, and the impacts of that experience study were first shown in this 2015 report, which is where these numbers are based on. So, go a little bit lower on the bottom of page eight. Lots more detail I could share with you here, but I wanted to give you the, the key takeaways, if you will, from this experience study and sort of why did where the impact came from. So, the first major change in terms of assumptions were, we increased or changed the life expectancy. We changed mortality tables. So, generally speaking, we're expecting that anybody that's in a plan of this nature, again, this applies to all MERS members, not just specifically the city or even Light and Power, we're expecting those folks to live about two years more on average. So, think existing city retirees, we're expecting them to live about two more years, but active employees, you know, that are still working here, hey, when they get to retirement, ballpark, we're expecting them to live about two more years. Well, if you go back to that example that we saw on, on the earlier page, you know, two more years of a lifetime benefit payment increases the liability, if you will. Now, again, some folks will make that, some folks will not, but that increases the liability. But the asset, if you think about the scale, the liability's got just a little bit more, but the asset stayed at, at this level. So, the scale shifts a little bit, if you will. So, that was the, the first impact. The second assumption that, that MERS changed is, is what we call our investment rate of return. So, historically, since 1946, MERS has assumed that when the money comes over, our calculations are based on an 8 percent long-term rate of return. Now, we've had some good years, we've had some challenging years, but in recognition of sort of volatile markets, and a side note, I love where the market's at right now, but that will just last forever, but, you know, we'll, we'll see. But especially in recognition of 2008, there's been some challenging market times, and it's, it's been a little bit harder to predict. So, our board felt that, given the policy of the Federal Reserve and just where things are at, an 8 percent return might be a little bit optimistic. So, they, they lowered that down to 7.75 percent. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you think about, okay, well, what's the, what's the impact of that? If we go back to what we mentioned in the beginning, when the money gets into the retirement plan, it comes from the city, it comes from the employee, and it comes from investment returns. And that's the three sources of money that go to, you know, to pay for an individual when he or she is retired. So, if we're expecting a little bit less to come from investment returns, basically that means a little bit more is going to have to come then either from the city or from the employees. It's just a matter of, you know, sort of how you slice it nice and, nice and pie. So, a little bit less from investments translates into more from one of those two parties. So, that was, that was number two. And then the, the third number that you see there, and there's some supporting information at the bottom, third piece that was changed is, we've changed how we apply what's called an amortization period. An amortization period basically says, it's sort of like a timeframe, a loan timeframe, and if you have an unfunded liability, which the city does, the amortization period represents the amount of time that you have to pay off that unfunded liability, will usually translate to time that you will become fully funded. So, we've changed it to a, what we call a fixed timeframe. And without giving a whole history on why things about where they were, suffice it to say, when an unfunded liability exists specifically for the city, the timeframe is a 23-year timeframe. So, there's not immediate need, you know, to today, tomorrow, one year, two years, five years, 10 years to get fully funded, but we do need to have everybody on a path to get to a fully funded position over no longer than a 23-year timeframe. So, if you do talk to colleagues at, at other communities across the state, you will find that most communities are at a, at a 23-year timeframe in the MERS system. Those that are not might be at something a little different, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, but it is a long-term obligation. So, I do want to let you know that at a certain date in the future, a certain year in the future, the unfunded facility does have a finite payoff, payoff date. That wasn't always the case. If I was addressing you a year ago, it was a little bit different approach in terms of how that was done. So, I don't, I won't bore you with all of those details. So, so those are the three major changes. So, basically, in, in a nutshell, the changes from the assumptions made the plan a little bit more expensive, if you will. So, the liabilities became a little bit more, the assets didn't move to the same level, but the liabilities increased, the scales tipped a little bit, the unfunded position grew a little bit, and that's where we resulted in the, in the 65 percent that we activated. There's, there's some more reasons as well, but that's, that's probably the, the primary one. So, councilman, to, to your question here, so moving over to page nine, I wanted to give you some of the numbers. And I highlighted the numbers on the screen, which are specifically to the city employees and the general classification. Hope this is not too blurry. You can also see all the light and power contributions. So, so what we're looking at here is the contribution, the minimum required contribution rate that will start July 1, 2017, for all of the city's divisions, so light and power and city employees. And I highlighted two, two columns on the left-hand side here, bear with me. So, you see, there's, there's two columns that say, one says new assumptions, one says previous assumptions. So, previous assumptions was prior to us doing the experience study. What did the numbers used to be? That's not where we're at today. It's just on there to give you a comparison point, a point of reference. The new assumptions are what we're operating under now after this experience study. So, going across to the general employees, you'll see there's a 22.7 number under what we call the phase-in column and a 25.29 under a full impact column. So, what do these two numbers represent? Knowing this is, that this experience study had an impact on every single community, basically made every community's plan more expensive. Now, they didn't do it a lot, they didn't do it a little. It depended on the community. Our board felt that we can't really be in a position to say, you know, an increase of this amount is too much or not enough that the city of Lowell can manage that. We're just not in that position. Our board's not in that position to know what you can manage, you know, or not from a management standpoint. So, we wanted to give you a couple of options. So, the options are full impact, the higher of the two numbers says, let's deal with this, this increase that came from the assumption changes, head-on pay for the, what we call full impact in one year, you don't have the increases that came from this experience study. The phase-in says, you know, it's nice to do the full impact, but being respectful for budgets, let's spread this out over a five-year period of time as opposed to dealing with this in one year. So, when we're looking at contribution rates, the minimum required by default for the city when July 1, 2017 comes up will be the 22.7 for the general employee classification. That number is separate from the contribution that the employees are making at, at this time. So, add those, those two component pieces together, you're looking at around the 5 percent, the 25 point, excuse me, 27.7 is the combined cost of, the cost of the plan. So, councilman, to your, to your question earlier, that's, that's the, that's the breakdown. And what we do then is take the percentage of pay times whatever the active employee payroll is at that particular time when the reporting starts coming in. So, July 1 comes around 22.7 from the city's perspective is the default amount, and whatever the active employee payroll, total dollar amount is at that time, that's the, that's the amount of the invoice on a, on a monthly basis. Does that help to clarify? I think that statement you made earlier.
Yeah, it, still, the, the employee numbers are much larger than the 5 percent in those columns. I mean, it was 30 percent roughly to 25 percent of the dollars that were going in.
Oh, and that was both entities too. So, that, that's, that's light and power employees kicking in that, in that particular money as well, if that, if that helps. So, that wasn't just city. I, I didn't have that data to break it down specifically at, at the city level, but that represents in total the amount that all employees in the city, light and power and city employees contributed in that particular calendar year, the sum total of their 5 percent. And 5 percent, you know, will obviously be different for one employee, you know, versus another based on, based on their pay scale. So, I know I'm a little bit over 20 minutes, and I, and I apologize. I honestly have one slide left to go. So, that sort of sets us up with that very brief background information and the information on page 10. So, the conversations that, that Michael and I had a couple of weeks ago, talking about, hey, you know, what's, what's going on out there? I thought, Michael gave a great introduction as far as, you know, there's funding levels that span the spectrum in the state of Michigan. There's funding levels that span the spectrum in the United States of America. So, what is quote-unquote right for one community may not be right for another community, but I wanted to give council a feel for what's sort of going on out there, and what are some of the solutions. Again, these are all probably longer conversations in themselves, but the bar graphs represent a number of communities that have taken a given action in a particular calendar year, starting back in 2011. And they're not really listed in order, but just starting at the top very briefly, you see cost sharing for existing employees. So, in 2000, this is data as of the end of 2016. So, in 2016, 136 municipalities that had a defined benefit program changed how much their employees are contributing to the plan. So, again, what that was, maybe they weren't contributing, now they are. Maybe they're at, you know, they were 4 percent, now they're at 5. They were at 5, now they're at 6. So, a whole variety, but far and away, one of the biggest things I've seen is just employees contributing more. So, that, that's number one. Moving down on the page from the second, from the bottom, shows voluntary contributions, and that's, that's the high bar graphs that you see there, including the city. Last year, there were 269 communities that kicked in a little bit extra cash above and beyond what was continually required by the actuaries from MERS in a particular calendar year. So, the advantage of that is, you know, you're getting money in, you're getting it invested over a longer period of time, and hopefully, you know, getting out in front of, of increasing costs in the future. So, those are the So, those are the two biggest ones, but beyond all of that, it really becomes a question if, you know, where are you at today in terms of a retirement plan that you offer? You know, looking at it, obviously, from a cost standpoint, from the city's budget standpoint, but balancing that out with the recruitment needs of the city, and then the retention needs of the city. So, depending on, you know, the philosophy towards retirement, there's a number of different ways or approaches or strategies that can be deployed to meet certain financial goals, excuse me, and certain recruitment retention goals. So, the other items listed on the page generally show the other actions that municipalities across the state are taking. So, for instance, if we go back to the top, sorry, I'm jumping here a little bit, you'll see a lower defined benefit plan for new hires. So, that's saying, hey, you know what, we've got a new employee that's going to come in, we're not going to give he or she the 2.5% multiplier plan, which is on a level here, we're going to give them maybe a 1.5% multiplier. So, still a lifetime pension, still that promise, just not at the same level that's currently provided today, not changing anything on anybody, it's just that new person that comes to work for the city. So, that's an option. Next option down where you see a, what's called a bridged benefit, that's changing the benefit multiplier for all existing employees of the city. So, again, right now, we've got a 2.5% multiplier. It's possible to change the benefit multiplier on a moving forward basis. So, for all of the individuals that are here, we can say, hey, from day one to today, you got a 2.5, and from this day forward, you got a 1.5. And that immediately lowers the cost of the plan because you're providing a lower level of benefit. It's still defined benefit, it's just not at the same level as it was before. So, you can sort of see the communities that have taken an action. That's a more urgent action, there's cost savings because it affects the individuals right now. There's an option for what we call a hybrid plan, that's the next line down. Hybrid plan for new municipalities or for new hires, Light and Power did that for their non-union employees a number of years ago. So, they've closed their defined benefit plan. If you were in the plan, you're in the plan, but for new hires, they have a hybrid plan. A hybrid plan is a combination of defined benefit and defined contribution. So, it's a much lower level of defined benefit, still gives you a monthly lifetime benefit, but calculated at much lower plan provisions than, say, what the city provides right now. Coupled with that, you have a 401A defined contribution plan, which is very similar to the 401K type plan. So, you've got both of those provided to the individuals. So, you can see, you know, the number of communities that have deployed that action. Another option out there is just a pure defined contribution plan. So, closing the pensions plan that you have and changing to a completely different plan type, which would be in the 401A, and that's, again, very similar, with a few differences to what a 401K is in the private sector. So, that, you can see that trend line as well. And then, the last one that I just really want to mention is, it gets a lot of talk, at least here in Lansing, there's the ability to bond for your pension liability. So, go out and issue a bond to pay off the unfunded liability that you have. And there's only been seven communities, eight actually, now there's one this year, eight communities in MERS system that have done that, about 11 statewide. The legislature passed a bill a couple years ago that said, you have a defined benefit plan, you have the ability to bond for the unfunded liability, but you must close that plan and specifically establish a defined contribution plan in order to bond for that. So, again, depending on the financial circumstances of a community, you know, sometimes that makes sense, sometimes it doesn't. So, that's sort of, again, a high level of just sort of what's going on out there. You know, the average funding position in MERS is at 72%, but again, there's a huge array of funding levels. I mean, we've got some that are way over 100, and we have some that are low, obviously they're low. So, it runs the spectrum. So, you know, for some folks, it's a very urgent conversation, some folks, it's a conversation that they want to address, it's not tomorrow, but they need to do something, you know, sooner or later, some are more on a long-term approach, and some are good with where they're at. So, that was really the intention of this information I wanted to share with you, just to give you a feel for where you're at, maybe where you're at, give you at least the takeaway that MERS has everyone on that path to become fully funded over the 23-year timeframe. For some folks, they want to get there a little faster, some folks, they have a change in philosophy in terms of what they want to offer on a moving forward basis. So, just wanted to give you a feel for what your options are at a high level, and what's going on across the state, and things like that. And I'm glad to have continued conversations with you on a moving forward basis. I apologize, I know I went over my 20 minutes. So, are there any questions that I can answer?
Yes, I have a question. Regarding the cost-sharing component, for example, in our community, in Light and Power, they might actually contribute more than we do, I'm actually not aware of that, but I'm not sure, but say, for example, today, our employees are contributing 5%. My understanding is, is if we increase the employer's contribution, the employee's contribution, that reduces the employer's contribution, correct?
Right, that by default, correct. Yeah, you've got to pie, however you divide it out, one pays less, one pays more.
So, I guess my question is, is if, taking that model in place, if we were, that access that the employer doesn't have to pay because their percentage went down, would that access, if we just put, if we made that payment towards reducing the liability, is that possible, take that payment to make an additional payment to reduce the liability beyond what the max-out payment would be? I mean, would that?
It is. That's your other option. So, the two options are, employees pay a little bit more, city contribution goes down, or employees pay a little bit more, city doesn't take a decrease, city keeps it at that same level, and you use that as additional contributions towards the plan to bring down that unfunded liability over a longer timeframe. So, yes, it could go either way. Thank you.
Mike, one of your three changes as a result of the experience study was the fixed amortization period. Is that the 23 years that you're referring to?
It is.
So, in 23 years, we'll be back on target.
Yeah, and all of these charts and tables, I think, come from, again, this annual actuarial evaluation. It's a pretty intense report, multiple, you know, 34 pages of detail specifically about the city's plan. So, lots of nitty-gritty numbers, you know, if you're curious, so, Michael and Lori, you know, get those reports. And I just wanted to look down some of the higher-level things that give you a bird's-eye perspective of that, but there's a lot more detail, and those numbers are all disclosed in that report that you get, that very detailed report.
I know Lowell Light and Power changed the policy that new hires don't get the deluxe package that their existing employees have in the past. Has the city done anything like that, or are the city employees still getting?
No, new hires are defined benefit. And quite frankly, when I was offered the position and was advised that I had a defined benefit package, I was absolutely shocked I had it. I came from a situation where, obviously, my employer, two times ago, I vested into a defined benefit package. When I went to the place that I came here from, I went into a defined contribution. And then, here, I'm a defined benefit. Quite honestly, the offering of defined benefit after everything that's happened in the last five to 10 years is almost an anomaly. You don't see it, even for police officers in many communities.
Right. I don't think that we want to consider taking anything away from anybody that is currently employed by the city, but I think we need to look at being more attuned of what the market and the reality of the environment is, and make a change and help keep our costs under control.
And just going forward, we're going to be doing some budget work in the next few weeks, and I would trust that you're probably going to be talking about moving in this, and we'll look at what that might be in our next budget. But I will say, and I was looking around the room, and I may well be the "I'm receiving" returner. And I'll tell you, something that's well-planned, well-thought-out is nice. So, what we can do for our employees, and as they have their plan with their spouse or others, a good plan usually works well. So, what we can do to help our employees plan would be very good.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Chief Bugle, Motor and Carrier Enforcement Training.
Sue's going to switch over the projector to my screen. Here we go. Some of you may have realized, over the past six to nine months, I sent Officer Gordy Lauren to motor vehicle, I'm sorry, commercial motor vehicle training, and he just completed his last school, I want to say a week and a half, two weeks ago. And this is one of our local businesses utilizing a third-party hauler. During this training, I didn't realize how many trucking violations actually do occur in the city of Lowell as an educational process for myself, because I think with the size and shape of the vehicles, most officers don't even bother to stop them unless they're speeding. Not saying this vehicle is in violation, but again, it's a third-party hauler for one of our local businesses, and what we realized is that if we have our own commercial vehicle officer, and we write these citations under local ordinance, 70% of the revenue can come back to the city, which was, caught my attention, because that's a nice number that I like to hear. The general enforcement, there's specific licenses required for the driver of the commercial motor vehicle. There's a medical card requirement, driver qualifications, logbook, driving rules, registration requirements, fuel tax, common violations, and citation completions. Again, these are several things that a majority of the trucking companies do follow the rules. However, I do have friends in the trucking industry that tell me that there are several drivers and companies that do not follow these rules. They simply ignore them, rolling the dice, hoping they're not going to get stopped, and they do have fines set aside, ready to go, in case they are stopped. So, why is this important to us? Well, for the last three years since I've taken over as chief, all I've been hearing about is roads, 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 and if you have an overweight vehicle, what is that going to do to our roads and our infrastructure, or everything underneath the roadway? We're going to start enforcing the length, the width, registration pertaining, and to the vehicle weight, which is kind of why we're here today. In order to do a roadside vehicle inspection safely, we're going to, this vehicle would be pulled to the side and weighed in an area. One thing that we don't have are the scales. In your packet, there is one company that uses a specific scale called the loadometer, and I will get to that in a few minutes. But why does this benefit the community? The road system quality would be greater because of the enforcement of overloaded trucks. There's less possibility of commercial vehicle crashes within the city limits, as you know, if something's heavier, it's going to take more time and distance and energy to stop it. Lower the truck traffic in the city limits due to the driver's knowledge, knowing that we have an enforcement officer on our force. Now, generally, Officer Lauren works days, and he has varying days off, and the drivers would not know when he's working or when he would be off. Why is this important? On I-96 corridor, we have the Ionia scales, where the trucks will routinely drive through Lowell to avoid the scales, knowing that they're overweight. He's been trained to spot an overweight vehicle just by grabbing it and go down the road. I can't do it, but he can. Get the scales out, weigh the vehicle, and the fines depend on what the magistrate at 63rd District Court wants to impose on them. So, let's say if it's a $1,000 fine, the city would get $700 of that back. Permit compliance, wide loads, there's specific, you have to have a chase vehicle, lead vehicle, there are specific permits through the state of Michigan. Several companies will try to save the money and not pull the permit and make the trip without the permit. That is also a hefty fine. And again, enforcing the truck routes, probably the biggest nemesis of the city right now is a GPS unit. Nobody knows how to read signs on the street anymore, nobody reads a map, they follow their GPS, and several times a day, we'll see trucks go up Monroe. And I believe that was what that vehicle was pulled over for, was not following the truck route. And again, once the vehicle stops, other violations will appear. So, why are we here tonight? I would like to purchase two of those loadometer scales, and I know they're quite hefty in price, but I would not come to you if I didn't have a solution to the problem. We can pick up these scales with zero cost to the general fund budget because we have money set aside from the salvage vehicle inspections that Officer Lauren has been doing. So, I would like to make that purchase, and that would be my recommendation would be to use salvage inspection money to purchase two of the scales for our commercial vehicle enforcement officer.
Sounds good to me. I think that all those enforcements would be excellent. Not that we want any more traffic on Jefferson Street, but it is the truck route, and we would do our people to comply, and Jefferson is constructed as a truck route. Our piece of paper here says, maybe no action is needed, but it's something that maybe that there is, I would make the motion that we go ahead and support the chief with these two purchases.
I'll support.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would like to discuss a little bit. The numbers that you gave, were those yearly, yearly fines and fees? These are set right now as a 1 of 2017 at 63rd District Court, on the page that says trucking violations. $315 for overweight is calculated by axle, and I believe it's like 6 cents per pound. When I looked at your numbers, assuming it was yearly, it looked to me like in two and a half months, you paid back for buying the purchase of the two scales? That's not even including what he gets for inspecting the vehicles. He gets $100 for each vehicle that he inspects, so that we have quite a bit of money in that. And the statute's very specific on how we can spend the money. And I, we looked at the statute, and yes, we can spend it on this, but what we can't do is go out and buy a fire truck or a bobcat. We couldn't buy anything like that, that has to be specific, law enforcement related. And part of the problem is that the Waymaster can't cover every area? There's just not enough of them. Okay. Yeah, when I worked at the little shop down the road, if you could pay it off in seven years, it's really a no-brainer, and they would approve that, so two and a half years sounds good to me.
Sue?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Mike, ordinance discussion on the show vote?
Yes. The show vote committee formed by the Chamber of Commerce is working toward establishing their fundraising campaign to repurpose the show vote. We've had discussions amongst ourselves about different options regarding where the donated funds will be placed. We discussed the option of a designated fund in the city chart of accounts, and what I would like to do is talk to you about that option as we consider moving forward. And there would be some different ways to tackle that if we did it. Our conversation initially, my conversation initially started with Liz Baker regarding where would the fundraising dollars go. We looked at the possibility of utilizing the community foundation, and we also looked at the possibility of just forming a separate bank account, and we also looked at the possibility of utilizing, designating a fund in the city's chart of accounts to do that. One of the things about, the first thing is, when we looked at the community foundation, the concern that I had was, Mike, and I'm not 100% familiar with the Community Fund of Grand Rapids, but my understanding is that many of these community foundations, they, the money...